Calling this meeting to order at 7:02. If anyone needs translation this evening, please use the headphones that are at the front. Si alguien necesita traducción esta noche, por favor, úsalo al teléfono disponible al frente. I ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight, those that are here present with us in person and also those of you that are online. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on October 5th, 2023?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on and move to public comment. I want to remind everybody that you have four minutes. And please line up at the mic to speak. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Katherine Anderson. I live at 15 Powder House Terrace in Somerville. I'm a special education teacher and at the Brown Middle School and the president of the Chelsea Teachers Union. Tonight, you're going to hear testimony regarding ongoing bargaining with Central Office about unfilled positions across the district. Hiring is in flux across the district, but our most recent report from Central Office indicates that there are 50 unfilled positions across our bargaining units. These numbers are in flux because the district is hard at work recruiting in the midst of a nationwide educator shortage. As a union, we recognize and appreciate the incredibly difficult work of finding and retaining a diverse and qualified workforce. Chelsea has rightly been celebrated for hiring members who reflect our student body. We all know the important impact this has on students' educational and social emotional well-being. However, even with all of this hard work, we still have dozens of vacancies across the district. Our most recent report indicates that we are missing three instructional coaches, 12 paras, and 32 teaching positions across the district. The vast majority in the special education and English language learner departments. You're going to hear written testimony tonight from members across the district speaking to the myriad impacts of these vacancies at every grade level. We've been meeting with the district since September in an attempt to address these impacts. Unfortunately, the district's response so far has been far from what our kids need. They've agreed to make a small change that will allow paras with bachelor degrees to serve as long-term substitutes and have said they'll allow school psychologists to miss some meetings. As for the rest of the vacancies, the district's response was, "A vacancy in a position that was budgeted but not filled by itself is not an appropriate basis for concluding there has been a substantial increase in workload." My colleagues' written testimony will speak to the impact this has on their workload and, most importantly, on student learning. They'll make clear what the substantial increase in workload has been. I'm going to outline the asks that have been refused to address this increase as we all work hard to hire for the vacancies. Number one, that families be informed when their child is missing a teacher and be updated on efforts to fill the position. Number two, cease and desist counting one educator as two where we are missing an inclusion special education liaison, multilingual educator, or general education teacher. Number three, compensate the understaffed school psychologists and the special education liaisons, multilingual educators, and general education teachers who are working solo where there should be a co-teacher or have increased class sizes due to unfilled positions. And number four, add lead positions where coaches are missing. We are seeking clear, simple remedies to this situation that go a long way to at least recognizing the gargantuan efforts our existing staff are putting in to get kids what they need. The district has responded with almost nothing. We know that efforts are going into hiring for these vacancies, but our staff deserve efforts to show appreciation to doing the near impossible to get our kids what they deserve. I'll end by saying that I am far from alone in asking for this. We distributed a petition in support of these demands, and in less than a week, nearly 375 staff members signed on in support. We are trusting that the school committee is able to help the Central Office find a way to make movement in these negotiations. Please hear these calls for support so we can retain these great educators and help every student succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in person that would like to share a public comment? Going once, going twice? Yes, that's perfect. Thank you. And next, we'll also move into, if there are no other in-person comments, we also have written statements that were sent.
I'll go slow. Don't worry. I'll state the person's name and address and then their statement. Sarah Ruddy, 20 George Street, Cambridge, Mass. I teach two sections of ELA-10 and two sections of AP Language Composition. Combined, I have 67 students in AP Language, which is a course in college and writing. We do written assessments every other week and a quarterly performance assessment. To provide valuable feedback, I need to spend around 10 minutes per essay reading, commenting, and grading. For my students to really get the full benefit of process-based writing, which is the standard for college comp, and I know this because I also teach college comp, I would really ideally spend 15 minutes per essay, so even the 10-minute limit is shortchanging my kids. That means I would need to spend 670 minutes grading each batch of essays. To put into perspective how much time that is, I have 290 minutes of prep time per week, so it would take all of my prep time for 2.3 straight weeks to grade the work of just one of my two classes. In addition, I would still need to prepare materials for my classes and grade all the other work that I assign, and I need to do this several times per quarter. I'm not obliged to work outside of my contract hours, nor should I need to. I accept that it is my profession that there are times when I need to work outside of my contract, but doing so should be the exception, not the norm. Many people have opinions about alternative ways to deliver feedback, whole-group feedback via exemplars and show calling, peer-to-peer feedback, self-reflection and self-assessment, and more. I do all of these things with my students because I am a good teacher. But in advanced writing courses especially, students still absolutely need individual targeted feedback, and they need grades. As for me, I deserve equity with my counterparts. Having 380 minutes more grading time than I have contract time every two weeks is inequitable, and it's not fair to me or my students. If we are serious about wanting our students to succeed in AP courses and on AP exams, we need to mitigate the teacher shortages immediately. If we are serious about wanting students with disabilities to succeed in the classroom, we need to mitigate the teacher shortage immediately. If we are serious about wanting any student to excel at school and beyond, we need to mitigate the teacher shortage immediately. Next comment. Monica Rubio Melada, 9 Garland Street in Chelsea, Mass. My name is Monica Rubio Melada. I serve as the Special Education Principal Clerk based at the Berkowitz School. One of the vacancies that is currently impacting me is the lack of psychologists in the district. Special ed clerks are being directed to gather materials and scan to Google Drives that were once at the discretion of our district hired psychologists. These materials may include evaluation consent forms, past psychologist evaluations, IST files, 504 plans, et cetera. The gathering of these materials depends on the student's journey with special education, i.e., who is being evaluated for the first time or being reevaluated. As previously stated, these things have been done by the district psychologists as they have the ability to review the student's physical file in person at their own discretion. It can be burdensome to collect these items as special ed clerks follow inconsistent schedules as it is. We cover the main office clerk's 30-minute lunch and pay 20-minute break on top of our own, thus leaving us less than 6.7 hours of work on our day-to-day. That is during the days we don't provide coverage in the main office. When the main office clerk is out, that puts a pause on our time-sensitive special ed workload. While I understand the department is lacking in service providers, specifically psychologists, the tasks that are being instructed to special ed clerks has increased, and there has neither been a mention of longevity of this temporary heavier workload, nor mention of the strides the department is taking to ensure we are compensated for this heavier workload as it is not our fault, no fault of our own. Julian Berku, 55, Gold Street, Stoner, Mass. My name is Julian Berku. I am a Grade 1 MLE teacher at the Berkowitz Elementary School. We are short-staffed in the MLE team at the Berkowitz and are missing Grade 1 MLE and Grade 4 MLE and MLE coach. There are newcomers in the Grade 1 regular class with four first-grade classes and only one MLE for the grade level, me. Many of the Level 1 and 2 language learners are unable to get support. They need to adequately access grade-level curriculum throughout the day. They are often confused with both school expectations and academic content instruction, and I am not sure if their families are aware that some of their ML students are receiving the support entitled to them by their placement in the EL program. Furthermore, without a coach, the MLEs on staff often spend time outside the instructional blocks co-conferencing each other in regards to the best strategies, student support, co-teaching models, documentation process, and more. Their 4th grade ML students are not receiving EL support whatsoever outside of the Tier 1 instruction provided by their SEI-endorsed teachers. In short, students are not receiving the hours per week they're entitled to with an MLE teacher, and the MLEs themselves, myself included, are left without cohesive day-to-day guidance. Having a paid LEAD MLE at the Berkowitz would allow for one of us to step up and task the guiding team throughout their uncertainties we encounter throughout the year. Selecting instructional focuses, best practices for assessing APT, how to leverage family's funds of knowledge, completing student support plans, preparing for access test practices, et cetera, while receiving compensation for the extra time needed to tackle this task. Increased retroactive compensation for general education teachers also going to lend to differentiate curriculum and plan accommodations, also going to lend accommodations in order for ML students unsupported by unhired MLEs would also acknowledge the hardship of that extra load these teachers are adding to their practice day after day. In my team at my school, many teachers are fulfilling both their own role and a portion of a role left vacant by someone yet unhired. People are understandably fatigued and frustrated completing multiple duties besides those of their own job description. And compensation for that time in those duties would be a solid action step to justify the expenditure while we wait for vacancies to be filled. We want schools Chelsea students deserve, and the answer is not placing unacknowledged, unrealistic expectations on our passionate, dedicated, talented teachers. Virginia Keim, 34, Joseph Road, Braintree. School psychologist caseload for 2023-2024 school year are down to two in a district that has a budget for five. As a result, the depth of the evaluations must be reduced and reports shortened due to time constraints and caseload overload, which is unfair to the families and students. This school year, two SPs already have 56 evaluations after eight weeks, equalling 112. Three additional contracted SPs have taken 26 evaluations so far, about 18% of the caseload. Based on last school year, over 500 evaluations completed. We could estimate 250 evaluations each for two SPs. Less than an estimate of 20% contracted is still 200 evaluations each and team meetings. This is humanly impossible with 185 school days. Given three unpaid positions, we are requesting overtime rate to be negotiated. Last school year, grievance filed by four SPs excessive workload of 150 times three evaluations each, plus one with 88 (maternity leave), plus two additional contracted for 21 evaluations totaling 559 evaluations. Resulting consultations, new staff meetings, times to report, writing two hours a month is insufficient, and PD days, which we could unfairly miss out on professional development if we opted out. Additional overtime was denied. Next comment. Reina Verbach, 16 Laurel Street in Everett. The biggest impact of vacancies on me is trying to support one of my mentees who does not have either their ESL or sped co-teachers. We should have vacancies pile up work and pressure on the rest of us. While she is trying to cover the roles of three professionals, I'm devoting more resources to her than any other mentee. So my other mentee has less support than she deserves. We are all professionals doing our best, but there are limits to our mental, physical, and time capacities. Additionally, I have two to three coverages per week. The vacancies and subs is so stressful and so much extra work on staff. Coverages are high-pressure, unpredictable, and often in far-flung parts of the building. Getting to my class after coverage is chaotic and impacts my stress level and my students' learning experience. It also highlights the disparities in how much is required from different staff members during admin duties. Jessica Flick, Medford, Mass. I'm writing to the school committee today to share the impact that the teacher shortages has had on me. I am a Brown Middle School math coach, and we are still short a math coach, a math teacher in our 8th grade. What this means to me is absolute exhaustion. I am attempting to do two people's jobs. I work 12-hour days and then at least one weekend day every week. This workload is affecting my family. I am only being compensated for the times that I teach math class. However, I am planning seven lessons per week. We have double periods, twice a week, meeting with a special educator to adjust lessons, grading students, assessments, meeting with students after school, and contacting families. Last week, a student's guardian called me to ask why her child failed the last test, but I am not the math teacher. There is no math teacher in that classroom. I am doing all of the work in addition to the responsibilities of a math coach. Every week, I observe teachers, meet with them to debrief the observations, co-plan lessons with them, and co-teach or model lessons. I also plan professional development for BMS teachers as well as for the district. This year, I have three brand-new math teachers all working under emergency licenses, and they need as much support as I can provide. I am also supervising practitioner for a second-year Teach for America. This is a lot. I hope you take my story into account when you are considering how the shortages are impacting us. It is truly not sustainable. Greg Lawson, 76 New Hall Street in Malden. Here are some of the impacts I've seen as a result of the teacher and other staffing shortages at Chelsea High School. All the inclusion classes I teach and those of the regular education teachers I am in contact with have student rosters of at least 29, and some teachers tell me their classes are in the mid-30s. On some days, we have to look for extra chairs or new corners to sit in for students when they are all present. Last year, I taught content to a total of 70 students, including about 30 on IEPs. This year, I teach 140, including over 60 on IEPs. Just learning so many names has been a challenge. Pushing into class every other day has not been effective. Students are used to and need two teachers there every period. On some days when I am not there, although I often spend time in all six classes a day, students are taking tests and need IEP accommodations such as small groups, which there is no extra room for in the school. Every day, they are not testing. They need other accommodations such as small group instruction, instructional aids like reference sheets, et cetera, which cannot be provided if I am not there. I often hear students say to me things like, "Mr., why you're not here today?" Some parents and students have expressed concern about the reduction in IEP services to halftime and are asking why this is the case. My IEP caseload toward the end of the year, when some requests of special education grievance were granted, was 18. This year, it is 24 and growing due to transfer students, a 33% increase. I counted over 90 progress reports that I wrote last week, which involved me staying up to 3:00 and 4:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday night and working most of Sunday morning. Other special education teachers have reported seeing up to 85 students, each of who have from one to four progress reports that they complete, making the numbers of reports in the hundreds. The effects of the staffing vacancies are being felt school-wide. Concerts, deans, paras, subs, support staff like clerks and admin are already stretched thin, and tasks involving student support are taking longer to complete. More tasks outside of teaching, scheduling counseling, students, curriculum development and implementation, clerical work, parent contact, and many others are falling on teachers. Maria Andrea Tola. I work at the Kelly, which doesn't have vacancies. I support my fellow educators and CPS students who are currently dealing with ramifications of vacancies.
Kelly McGinnis, 49 Oakland Street in Malden. I am Kelly McGinnis, and I am currently the only 8th-grade special education teacher from my grade at the Clark Avenue Middle School, where there is a budget for two special educators per grade level. Since we have not filled the vacancy, all 21 students on IEPs are serviced by me to meet all of their academic IEP goals. In addition to having to do the servicing and paperwork requirements for two positions, I am particularly tough. I am in a particularly tough position because of the general education teacher that I work with is out on maternity leave. There is not a long-term position filled. Instead, we currently have one ESS teacher who comes in three days a week and the other two days a week. There is nobody but myself. The daily ESS substitute versus a long-term sub has led to all the daily prep work and grading to fall on me. Therefore, I am also doing all the grading and often instruction for Math 1 class. Currently, I am doing three jobs, not one, and I am doing it without question. Additional compensation won't fill these positions. We recognize that the district is hard at work to make that happen, and I understand that the jobs are posted. However, it would help to recognize all the additional work that I am doing to fill these gaps to help all 8th-grade students get an education they deserve. Rebecca Trigg, 12 MacArthur Road, North Reading. I am a middle school science teacher and have relied on my special education co-teacher to gap the learning in all my inclusion classrooms. We join forces to ensure that we are reaching all learners. I lost that role in my classroom this year when students truly need it most. I assume we've spoken about data in our I-Radi scores. I consider myself to be an educator who cares about my students' reaching academic goals and have put in double efforts at 120%, making up the role she played. Now, can I help all of my students learn by adding her role into my own? Yes, but at what capacity? If I'm making sure my students' IEPs needs are met legally by creating small groups and leading their learning and focusing their attention, I am forfeiting the opportunity to engage and challenge my students at or above level. If I work with my at-or-above-level students, my small group rears off course, and I spend the next quarter of class getting us back to mark. I'm burnt out. We're burnt out, and we don't yet know if and when these roles will be filled. I will end this by saying, attitude reflects leadership, and if we are working double time to fit standards set forth by leadership, why you should be amenable to showing appreciation to that effort suggested by our union. Julia Basile, 29 Hammond Street, Cambridge, Mass. I hear from colleagues all the time at the high school about the impact of their large classes and the stress it causes them. It will benefit from everyone to acknowledge this problem and find meaningful solutions. Lisa Brody, 27 Fifth Fields Street in Watertown. Not long ago, I mentioned to someone that I have 129 students and two new preps. A woman nearby touched my wrist and said encouragingly, "You can do it." My first response was, "Yes, but I shouldn't have to." But the truth is, no, I can't. My students' needs are not being met. I am dropping balls. I am falling behind on parent communication, on tracking down chronic class skippers, on building the relationships that can move them back to steady attendance. I'm catching the students who are slipping through the cracks. I'm challenging students who are quick to learn and are bored. I am doing everything less well than I should. I lie awake at night. My AP Lit classes currently have 33 and 35 motivated, hard-working students who deserve far more individual attention and detailed feedback on their worth than I've been able to give them, despite spending hours every weekend grading. My sixth-period ELACP-11 push-in class has 31 students, 13 with IEPs, two with 504s, and a majority with social, emotional, and behavioral challenges, some quite serious. Until last week, there was no push-in teacher assigned to the class. I won't list all the ways students' needs have gone unmet in my sixth-period class. Suffice to say, security should not be my support teacher. In my fourth-period ELACP-11, the push-in teacher was just reassigned. Both the previous teacher, Ashley Flores, and the new one, Frances Hart, are wonderful, but how much can a sped teacher do when she sees the students at most twice a week, has no planning time to meet with the classroom teacher about curriculum and modifications, and is often pulled out for meetings and other obligations? Ashley was forced to miss two straight weeks of my class. The school argues that the push-in model is intentional and not a triage response to vacancies, but I don't understand what intent is behind it. In my classroom, the push-in model is a vacancy. I'm sorry I can't be here to speak more in detail, but the myriad impacts these circumstances have had on my ability to do my job well, on my own mental health. Please free to reach out to me. Margie Rome, Arlington, Mass. First special ed teachers, the impact of the staff shortage is palpable. Sorry, I can't say that word. Daily, we are faced with unprecedented heavy workloads broader than I've expected during my 20-plus years at Chelsea High School. The following example about special education progress reports completed quarterly illustrates how each task mushrooms in tandem with staff shortages. How is completion of progress reports taking approximately 33.9 hours quarterly during the 23-24 school year when the same task took 14.3 hours during the 22-23 school year? First, as the special ed teacher, I complete a progress report quarterly for each of the approximately 80 sped students in my assigned A classes totaling 240 students. Note, last year, each quarter, I completed about 35, not 80, progress reports. If a progress report takes 20 minutes each, that is 26.6 hours quarterly. Next, via email, I gather data about my students on caseload of 22, from which core subject teachers with no push-in special ed teacher and use to gather information to write progress reports requiring an additional 7.3 hours. Note, last year, my caseload was in the teens, not 22. Since there are fewer classes with a special ed and subject teacher than in previous years, far more non-special ed teachers who teach solo need to be contacted. Progress reports are just one of my many tasks that has expanded due to the staff shortage. Thomas Gordineer, 32 Lee Street in Cambridge. I'm lucky to be a teacher in one of Chelsea High School's co-taught classrooms, where a subject area teacher and an ESL for special education teacher are in a class together every single day to help multilingual students and students on IEPs learn alongside their peers. It is an excellent model and far better than other districts such as Boston, who pretend that a few visits a week from an ESL or sped teacher or even one teacher with several certifications can achieve the same results. That is just what our administration is pretending when they insist that the current vacancies are not affecting teaching and learning. I can see the strain it is putting on the students and my colleagues as they stretch themselves to the limit to give our youth the education they need and deserve, even under these conditions. Allison Gorman, 9 Church Lane in Burlington. My name is Allison Gorman. I am a 5th-grade EL teacher at the Clark Avenue Middle School. Frankly, I am horrified at the lack of urgency to the immense number of vacancies that we are experiencing. I understand that the school committee is identifying the nationwide teacher shortage has the reason for these vacancies. However, my former colleague, who left to work in other districts, we are losing teachers to other districts. Other districts are incentivizing teachers to join their staff. Other districts are paying their teacher for work they are required to do outside of their contract requirements. Other districts are compensating their teachers at a rate that is competitive with the level of education and experience. It is painful for me to see my colleagues and friends doing two jobs without being compensated appropriately. I believe that you know teachers will pick up the slack left by the vacancies because we care about our students and we want the best for them. However, we have already seen many of our colleagues resign from Chelsea Public Schools. I am deeply fearful that the level of burnout that we are experiencing will result in even more vacancies. Right now, teachers, paras, and clerks are burnt out and overworked. I believe that the school committee and district admin wanted to mend relationships and make an empathetic, good-faith effort. They would be subbing in schools on a regular basis. I would believe that you care more about these vacancies if you actually help teachers, paras, and clerks carry the weight of them. Sarah McAllister, 410 Summer Street in North Andover. I am a 5th-grade special education teacher at the Clark Ave Middle School, and I've been there for five years. I love working with my kids. I love working with my colleagues. I love working in Chelsea, but I don't know how long I can do this job and justify it with my love for the district. I'm currently the only 5th-grade inclusion teacher. We started the year with two special education teachers, but my counterpart left the district to work in one of the more manageable caseloads. This led to me taking on the responsibilities of two teachers. This also means that students on IEPs are not getting support in history or science classes. This is just one example of the district not prioritizing the needs of our most vulnerable students. I do not have enough prep time to fulfill my professional responsibilities of writing every IEP progress note and attending every single meeting, on top of planning instruction in both math and literacy classes. This leads to me spending countless hours outside the school day completing paperwork and preparing materials for my students. This is a profound impact on my life at home, and I am becoming burnt out. This is not sustainable for me or any other special education teacher. Unfortunately, our district relies on the fact that the teachers who work here will pick up the slack of any other teacher's job because it is the best interest for the kids. The current trajectory of the caseload is unsustainable. There are not enough hours in the day for me to do my job, and honestly, I do not know how I am going to finish the year of how I'm doing. and honestly, I do not know how I am go, how I am going to finish the year of how I'm doing. Let's have two more. My name is Megan Marahildo, and I live at four seventy Center Street in Randolph. I am a current eighth-grade multilingual learner educator at the Joseph Brown Middle School. This is my eighth year in the district, sixth year full-time teaching. The vacancies in the eighth-grade team at BMS this year include a math teacher who, for our foundational in, inclusion classes, a transitional multilingual educator, and until last week, a special education teacher. The same cohort of students did not have a science teacher until mid-September. The effects of those, these vacancies on the students include not receiving their legally mandated supports, inconsistencies in routines, and disparities in their education. For the teachers of the eighth-grade team, this means that we are trying to be two people in a classroom at once, a content provider and a specialist. We are not able to adequately meet the needs of our students because we do not have the training and time to prepare scaffolds, meet with the coaches to review best practices for areas there that are not our expertise, nor in my case, a background in mathematics and science. Due to the lack of a math teacher, I am helping grade math assignments in addition to my duties as a language teacher. In two years, these students will be required to take MCAS to graduate. With the vacancies across the district, at a staggering fifty positions and teacher retentions at an all-time low, how can we expect student achievement to improve? We must have solutions to the vacancies to help staff and students succeed. This is from Kylie McGee, forty-eight Highland Street in Waltham. I am writing to express my concerns regarding the current vacancy in our school that is affecting the education of some of the most vulnerable students. As a first-grade teacher at the Sokolowski, I have witnessed firsthand the impact of having a foundational language teacher to support our students. Our school serves as a, as a diverse community with students from various linguistic backgrounds. It is imperative to provide multilingual support during tier-one instructions to ensure that all students have equal access to the high-quality education we are teaching. Unfortunately, due to unfulfilled positions of a foundational language teacher, we are facing several challenges. The absence of a foundational language teacher has placed additional burdens on educators such as our MLE, who is meant to be supporting our transitional MLLs, and another MLE pulled from upper grades to help support our classrooms. Teachers are being required to take on multiple roles affecting the quality of instruction and our ability to meet the diverse needs of our students. Right now, our MLLs are not receiving the intended support across tier-one instruction. I request that the school committee takes urgent action to address this issue and act on the Chelsea Teacher Union's demands to ensure that the well-being and educational needs of our students continue to be our top priority. This is a crucial, it is crucial to address these vacancies such as our missing foundational language MLE. I look forward to a positive resolution that will benefit our school and diverse student population. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sire, for reading those. And thank you for all the staff, community members, and faculty that have written to us, um, and to share your experiences, and we don't take, um, those words lightly, so thank you so much. Next, we'll be moving to, um, the report of the superintendent, so I'll go ahead and pass it over to Dr. Abada for her report.
Thank you. Okay, so first, um, this past month was a very busy month for us. October sixteenth was STEM Week, and the Sokolowski School welcomed local and state dignitaries to observe a classroom where students worked with the engineering and science curriculum. The curriculum is part of a partnership between the Chelsea Public Schools and the Museum of Science. And then, on Friday, October twenty-seventh, the Chelsea Police Department and the Chelsea Fire Department were honored to attend the Chelsea High School football game, where Chelsea's first responders were recognized. Our after-school programs at Chelsea High School and the middle schools are up and running, and if parents are interested in their students participating in after-school programs, um, please contact your child's school or visit our website. We have ample opportunities after school for students. And also this month, the Berkowitz School was awarded a five thousand dollar donation from Burlington Stores and its Adopt a Classroom program. Funds will be divided among Berkowitz teachers to purchase classroom supplies. And today is Dia de los Muertos. We wish everyone in our community who observes this day a blessed day. And then, on, um, the ninth of November is the annual Turkey Trump, this Saturday at ten AM at the Chelsea High School Stadium, and all funds will go to the Barry Dwyer Scholarship Fund. So, it's the eighteenth? Okay, did they change it? Oh, okay. Oh, you're, you're gonna run. Okay. All right, so with that, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have our success, indicators of success, and I will turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Adam Delady.
Thank you, Dr. Abada. Um, short indicators of success presentation tonight. Um, first off, we'll look at daily attendance rates. Um, you'll see two columns under the October column. Um, you have per month and then year-to-date. Um, and you will notice the color coding, um, by grade level. Unfortunately, um, each grade, with the exception of grade three, um, had a slight dip over, uh, from September, but that's often expected. September is always our best attendance month because nobody wants to miss the first few weeks of school. Um, grade three was the only grade that improved over the previous grade. Um, I will note that all, um, elementary, early childhood, and middle schools were still in the, in the, in the nineties for their percent rates. Um, but the good news here is under the year-to-date column, um, all grades, with the exception of grade nine, have a higher year-to-date percentage than last year. Um, so for example, grade one for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year had a, an attendance rate of ninety point zero percent. Um, and year-to-date this year, they had ninety-three point one percent. So each grade level, with the exception of grade nine, um, is currently on pace to beat last year. So, um, I think this is pretty good data, but it's still very early in the year. Um, as we look at the dropout rate, um, the goal being to decrease by two percent each year, um, thus far, we have fifty-five, um, dropouts. We had thirty-three last ye, last month and twenty-two this month. Um, so we are currently on pace for two point nine six percent. Um, you'll notice the comparisons to the previous year, those numbers are at this point in the year. Um, so each year for the past four years, um, September and October, it's been, um, increasing over the past few years. Um, if you break it down by Ls, students with disabilities are duly identified. Um, one point two nine percent of non-identified students, uh, thirteen total have dropped out. The bubble that we have is, uh, with our Ls, um, we are at six point one seven percent of our Ls, um, have dropped out, fi, uh, two point five six of our students with disabilities and two duly identified students. Um, so that adds up to fifty-five total, but for the month of October, we've had twenty-two students withdrawn. I know we had questions about this, um, last meeting, and we have our, uh, Policy and Procedure Subcommittee meeting coming up, where we're gonna dive deeply into this topic in terms of the process that we use to find these students. Um, often, uh, you know, we're sending home certified mail, we're calling, we're emailing with no response, um, and we get the certified mail back stating that there's nobody living at the address. So that's, um, the most common, um, indicator here, but we'll talk more deeply at the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee. Um, lastly, the in-out data. Um, overall, uh, we've had a hundred four ins for the month of October and sixty-three outs. Um, uh, total for the year, we've had two hundred ninety-eight newly registered students and one hundred twenty-two students who have, uh, left the district. The primary bubble seems to be between elementary and middle. Um, elementary had thirty-four in and eighteen out, and middle had thirty in and nine out. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Delady.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have an update from our student representatives. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Good evening, school committee. Um, vice chair Kathy Cabral, uh, superintendent Dr. Almy, Almy Abada, and school committee members. I have some excited updates to share tonight, starting off with, as part of Hispanic Heritage Month, Boston College Chelsea Public School students had the opportunity to visit the Chelsea Rotary Club. This visit provided a great chance to network, enjoy delicious food, learn more about the Rotary Club, and meet Ramiro Torres, AKA The Frickin Puerto Rican, host on, he was a host on ninety-six point nine radio station. Uh, and additionally, there are some thrilling events. Students from the eleventh and twelfth grade, uh, Chelsea High School attended a trip to college fair this week, similar to the one attended by ninth and tenth graders last month. This event holds significant importance for seniors as they finalize their college list and prepare to submit their applications. Furthermore, I am pleased to announce that the PSATs were successfully administered to the tenth and eleventh graders. On October twenty-fourth, we saw an impressive twenty-five percent increase in participation compared to last year, reflecting the dedication and commitment of our students. And I believe MCAS retakes are next week. Um, so good luck to the students taking retakes, thank you.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Over the past couple of weeks, we have been working to identify ways to survey Chelsea High students. We are currently creating a survey that would ask questions about the experiences of students at Chelsea High School and give the opportunity to students to provide their feedback. By the next school committee meeting, we hope to have gathered some data around student experience to share with you all. Adding on, the class at twenty-four officers successfully hosted their homecoming week a couple of weeks ago and their homecoming dance. This was an exciting opportunity to engage Chelsea High School students. In addition, over the course of the last month, we highlighted our senior student athletes for all fall sports. We greatly appreciate our athletic director, Amanda Alpert, who made seniors feel extra special by providing Chelsea banners for them. And a huge thank you to our brave first responders who participated in the football team's first responders night. Thank you to our first responders for their diligent service.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to our personnel update. So you, if you look in the enclosures, you'll see the, um, staff hired. And then, uh, we always track the demographic data. So we've hired twenty-one percent Caucasian, fifty-eight percent Hispanic, zero percent Black, and twenty-one percent Asian Pacific Islander. And then going over to the enrollment report, you can see our enrollment is still steady at six thousand one hundred and ninety-two students. I'd like to commend these two reports for the record.
Do we have a motion to commend these two reports to the record?
Second.
Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to accept the committee report and commend them to the record.
Second.
Thank you. Um, next, we'll go ahead and move on to new business. Consideration and action to accept a gift in the amount of five thousand from the Bu, Bu Lee Goldsmith charitable account for Chelsea Opportunity Academy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Colvas Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Let's eat in the affirmative and one absent.
Eat in the affirmative, one in, one absent, the motion passes. Consideration and action to accept art supplies for the Sokolowski Elementary School Fall Festival for the Cuidaten, Cuidarte Corporation in an estimated amount of three hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Colvas Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Let's eat in the affirmative and one absent.
Eat in the affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Consideration and action to amend the district, district school's activity account policy and procedures. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Colvas Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Let's eat in the affirmative and one absent.
Eat in the affirmative and one.
You're skipping me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Let's eat in the affirmative and one absent.
Eat in the affirmative and one absent, the motion passes. Thank you so much. Next up, we'll move over to announcements. Are there any announcements from any members?
You skipped me in the one before it also.
Can we call a roll call one more time?
Yeah.
For the consideration and action to accept art supplies for the Sokolowski Elementary School Fall Festival for the Cuidaten Corporation in an estimated amount of three hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Colvas Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
And let's eat in the affirmative and one absent, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Eat in the affirmative, one absent, thank you so much, appreciate you. Um, so with that said, we'll go back to announcements for this evening. Any announcements?
Not an announcement, but a comment, rather.
Yes, Ms. Alfaro?
Yeah. Uh, first of all, I'd just like to start by saying thank you to all of the teachers that gave their testimonial to all of the administration team. I know how hard you guys are working to educate the children in Chelsea. And every comment, uh, we, we cannot comment back, but everything was going into my heart. Uh, seeing how you're going over a hundred percent, you're going, you're giving two hundred percent to educate our children, and it means a lot. Listening how you also have to give away your Saturdays and Sundays, uh, for the best of our Chelsea students. So I don't want you, uh, to think that we don't take it seriously because we do. And thank you, thank you so much again.
Thank you, Ms. Alfaro. Any other announcements? All right. Do we have a motion to move into executive session? We won't be returning to a regular session at this time.
So moved.
I second.
All right, we will be moving into an executive session at this time. Thank you, everyone, for those of you that are in person. Appreciate you all for coming today. Appreciate you.